Please rise for the questions and remarks by a council member.
The United States of America, a free republic, a state, a nation, our God, invisible, the rest is our.
We have our annual, it's a wrapping up, the Omaha Fall Cleanup, and I want to personally thank the volunteers in my district. We have Exorbin Elmwood and Field Club and Levworth Neighborhood Association this weekend. So I know it's not easy to get volunteers, but they do a great job of organizing, as well as other areas of the city that the city holds these twice a year. And it's a tribute to the strong neighborhoods that make our city great, so I want to thank the volunteers and be sure to get your junk cleaned out of your garage and get it taken to the sites that the city provides. Thanks, Mr. President.
An affidavit of publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate having you here today and listen, and we look forward to hearing your opinions on our various agenda items we have. I would encourage you to turn your cell phones off or at least turn them to vibrate. We do have two proclamations today before we get started with the regular business meeting, and the first one is to be read by council member Melton in honor of Carmen Johnson.
Thank you very much. Carmen Johnson works in the clerk's office, so I'm just going to give a little background before I do the proclamation. And she has been doing all of the liquor licenses for all of our businesses and for many, many years, as I will go into. And she was just inducted into the Hall of Fame of the Omaha Restaurant Association. It was a week ago Sunday that she was there. It was a beautiful ceremony. Her family was there. We were there to support her. And so it was absolutely wonderful and well deserved, so I'm going to read this proclamation for you, Carmen.
Okay.
Whereas Carmen Johnson, the youngest of 10 children, was born and raised in Omaha and graduated from Technical High School in 1984 and the Institute of Computer Science in 1989. And whereas Carmen, a devoted daughter, mother, and grandmother, has a combined family of two children, one grandson, five stepchildren, four step-grandchildren, one puppy, one turtle, and a cat. As well as being a dedicated caregiver to her mother, husband, and sister, the latter two having passed away in 2019 and 2022. Carl was a good man, Carmen. And whereas Carmen worked for the Comprehensive Employment and Training Act from 1981 to 1983, and began her lifelong career for the city of Omaha in the city clerk's office as an administrative typist too and liquor license clerk. She started in 1983, receiving the Employee of the Year in the mid-1990s, so you've been honored before. And whereas after retiring in February 2019, Carmen returned to the clerk's office in a part-time capacity, where she continued to dedicate her time to helping the community, being a conduit of information, and helping businesses achieve their goals and building a network of professional and personal affiliations, including the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, Nebraska State Patrol, Kelly Plucker Law Firm, and the Hope Center for Kids. And whereas Carmen's motto is, "Show respect even to people who don't deserve it, not as a reflection of their character, but as a reflection of yours." Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Omaha officially designates October 24th, 2023 as Carmen Johnson Day.
Yay!
Yeah, but few words, Carmen, it's incredible. This was well deserved. You deserve it. I mean, this is normally going to restaurant owners and I think you were among the Simons were honored from Omaha Steaks were inducted at the same time. So it was quite an honor and well deserved.
Yeah, there was six, six of us and Greek Islands was one of them too.
That's right.
And then Dario was one also. There's a couple other, but you know, brain's not working this morning. But anyway, good afternoon, everyone, and I appreciate this honor. It's surprising, shocking, but deserved, and I appreciate it. I never thought after 35 years that I would be honored this way, so I really, really appreciate it. And I enjoy working with everyone, and I will continue to enjoy working with everyone. And just so everybody know, since the proclamation come out, everybody thought I was leaving. I'm not going anywhere. You guys are stuck with me.
Another 25 years, huh?
Yeah, since I was told I can stay as long as I want, you're kind of stuck with me. Since Carl's gone, by myself, you're stuck with me. So, but I really appreciate the honor, and I love all you guys, and I love working with you, so, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Well, thanks, and it said that you're back part-time, but you seem to be here all the time, so I don't think it's a part-time.
Yeah, and on the paper, it's part-time.
We appreciate having you here.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Can we get a picture of Carmen and her award?
Literally every license goes through Carmen's name, so don't mess with her.
There we go, here we go.
Thank you guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you. I'll handle our next proclamation, which is in honor of Community Media Day. Want to have Chris Craddock come to the podium if you would while I read this. We want to recognize Chris for all his great work here in our legislative chambers as it applies to community media and certainly coverage of all of our meetings. Also Mike Wallace, who I believe is now in the back room since you're up here to help us do this today.
Yes.
And I also want to recognize Liz Letty, who has done a lot of work on behalf of the city council in this respect, and I think that's appreciated in the community as well. So the proclamation reads like this. Whereas the sharing of ideas and information is critical to the vitality of communities across the Midwest. And whereas community media centers operated by municipalities, school districts, and nonprofit organizations provide video programming that focuses on local government decision-making, community events, societal issues, youth sports, the arts, religious services, and human interest stories. And whereas strong media centers build strong communities by encouraging government transparency, fostering civic engagement, elevating local voices, promoting area businesses, and training students in being strong local media representatives. And whereas operating through many platforms, community media centers strive to reach all media audiences through public, education, and government. That's PEG, access channels on cable television, video streaming platforms, video on-demand sites, and social media platforms. And whereas community media centers often offer students, nonprofit organizations, and residents the opportunities to learn media skills and to create and share programs of importance to them through these media platforms. And whereas given their connection to local communities, community media centers help foster a sense of community identity, connection, and understanding, as well as increase participation in local community activities and democratic governmental processes. Now for be it resolved, the City Council of Omaha declares October 20th, 2023 as Community Media Day. Thank you, Chris, for all you do. We appreciate having you here and all you do for the citizens.
Yes, sir, thank you. Thank y'all.
Any remarks you'd like to make?
Thank you, and thanks to Mr. Mike Wallace as well, our manager.
You bet. A man of few words behind the scenes, and we appreciate all the work you do. I have a proclamation. Madam Clerk.
Item six, to consider Class C E liquor license for NetPar located at 225 North 12th Street, Suite 150.
Public hearing and vote on number six is today. Proponents, please.
Hello, my name is James Hunter Carmichael. I reside at 2124 Copper Creek Drive, Crown Point, Indiana, 46307. The company name is NetPar, doing Attack Angle LLC, doing business as NetPar in the Capital District.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon, how are you today?
I'm doing great, thank you.
Can you give me a day in the life of what I, as a customer, would experience should I arrive at your facility?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Johnson, can you pull your microphone down so we can all hear you? There you go.
Thank you.
Really depending on what you're looking to achieve when you're there, it is built for families, for golf enthusiasts, for entertainment, for parties such as a three-year-old's birthday party to a reception for a corporate event. So typically when people arrive there that haven't ever been there or have not experienced golf, they find out how much fun it really is to go in. If you've kind of been to a Topgolf, it's kind of an indoor version of what a Topgolf would be, where you can entertain clients, entertain friends and family. If you're there for lessons, our manager Ryan here is behind me, he's a PGA pro, could get lessons there to enhance your game on the outdoor and the outdoor scope of golf. And if you're a kid who's never experienced golf, it's a great way to get introduced to golf in a fun way. They have games. We use TrackMan technology, which is the world leader, and launch monitor technology. The golf ball is accurate from one foot for every 150 yards, so it's very realistic to what you would experience outdoor. Having kids play golf in a, you know, it's one game that's themed around Pokemon kind of themed, and another one has Bullseye with trains, and some have lava and dinosaurs, so it's kind of a good way to introduce golf to kids. The alcohol aspect of it brings entertainment for events such as corporate outings and, you know, a reception before a wedding and things such as that. So I think people surprisingly who have not experienced it, I love it, and those that do experience golf tend to get addicted to it from a league standpoint and just kind of experiencing there, especially in the winter months. It's a very seasonal business and something that you can do in the winter months when it's not as easy to do things outdoors, especially in golf.
And what are your hours of operation?
Our hours of operation will be 10 a.m. till midnight. Seasonally Saturday and Sunday, we may open as early as eight.
So you are open on Sundays?
Yes. That, I will clarify, on the summers, probably not. Probably not Monday and Tuesday, I should say, excuse me.
Okay. So about how many people do you employ?
We would expect to employ around 10 people, 10 full-time equivalents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Note for the lights, is there a motion? Motion and second, roll call.
Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you all for your time. Appreciate you.
Item seven, to consider Class C liquor license for Spare Time Omaha located at 17202 Lakeside Hills Plaza.
Public hearing and vote on number seven is today. Proponents, please.
Thank you. Julia Plucker, 2804 South 87th Avenue, here on behalf of the applicant. Also, the regional manager is here to answer any questions. It's a luxury bowling, gaming, VR, laser tag, family-friendly place out in West Omaha. Thank you.
Thanks, Julia. And is James Harrington your client?
Yes.
Okay, I think he's on Zoom as well.
Oh, wonderful. Hi, James.
We'll give him a chance to speak here in a minute if he wants to. Any other proponents in the audience? James, we'll get you off mute in case you want to add anything there. Try that.
No, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. Are there any opponents to number seven? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
I just wanted to let you know, I got a piece of your advertising envelope with showing everything that you're doing. We got that in the mail yesterday at my law firm. And a bunch of us were discussing it, thinking that would be a great place to have our Christmas party this year. So I wanted to let you know that that advertising was great and it's already being received, so it looks like a great place. A little bit like maybe the V-Bowling that I always thought was great out by Oakview Mall, and it looks like you're kind of one-upping it here and doing it a little better with some really good food. So I'm very supportive. You're not in my district, but I go to everybody's district if I find a place I like. So I'm looking forward to your opening and seeing you in a few months.
Thank you. Mr. Rowe.
District, and I'd like to move approval. I did have a chance to talk to Gabriel yesterday, the local manager, about the concept and excited to welcome them to the neighborhood, and so I'd like to move for approval.
Motion and a second. Mr. Hug, you're recognized.
I just got a question. I did not see the advertisement, so I apologize. But are you going to have like candlepin bowling or? Because the New England thing kind of thought, hey, maybe they're going to have candlepin bowling.
Hi, I'm Tim Corley. I'm the president of Spare Time Entertainment. It's not candlepin bowling, it is actually 10-pin bowling, but with strings, string machines.
Okay.
Just to give a little history, little rundown before, we have 18 locations all over New England, down the eastern seaboard and in the Midwest. This is actually our third location in the Midwest. We're really excited to be here in Omaha. I think it's going to be great for the town and for the citizens. We do offer a luxury bowling experience, and we do have like an 80-game arcade. We have laser tag escape rooms. We have a bar, restaurant, and sports bar, so pretty much something for everyone. So we're really excited to be here. Appreciate the opportunity.
Put me on your mailing list.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys.
I forgot to get your address there if you could for the record too. Your address for the record there too.
This address? It is 17202 Lakeside Hills Plaza. It's the old Gordman's building.
Okay, thanks. All right, there's no further lights. There's a motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item eight, to consider Class C liquor license for Moxie Omaha Downtown located at 409 South 12th Street.
Public hearing and vote on number eight is today. I believe we have the applicant by Zoom. Christine, we'll try to get you off mute here in a second. Okay, try that.
Hi, this is Christine Hobel, on behalf of Omaha DTMM Investors, 409 South 12th Street.
Thank you.
Also on for us is Tim O'Neill.
All right. Would Tim like to say anything as well? There, try that.
Good afternoon, Tim O'Neill, O'Neill Heinrich Law Firm, 800 Lincoln Square, 121 South 13th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska. Here to support the applicant. I know you have a busy agenda. I'm losing my voice for allergies, so I'll ask if you have any questions, feel free to ask him when you ask for your support.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents in the audience? Please come down. Would you want to speak?
Hi.
Hi.
Amanda Walters, 409 South 12th Street, general manager for Moxie.
Great. Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mr. Bagley.
Thanks, Mr. President. Either, we'll give Tim a break. I'll ask either Christine or Amanda if you want to come back up. Sorry, you just got comfortable again. I know there was a good story on Channel 7 for Moxie that was recently ran, so you, just tell us briefly, so you've been, this has been under construction and in the works for five years, correct?
Correct.
And thank you for coming down today.
Of course.
So tell me, so it's going to have a nice social experience for people is what you advertise, and it's in the old market. Tell us what your place is, and it's at the hotel there, so it's a little different flavor, so the floor is yours.
All right, no pressure. All right, well, Moxie is definitely different. It's a Marriott brand. And we are there in the old market trying to bring a new trend to the area. We welcome family members of all sorts to come in and join us. Our bar and our public areas are open for everyone. We have some games available for people just to come in and enjoy themselves is basically what it's about, but we're also a hotel. So we welcome our business travelers. We want to bring as many people to Omaha as we possibly can. We all know that the lodging in the Omaha area, especially during our peak seasons like College World Series and so forth, is high demand. And we're hoping to help resolve that issue there by having Moxie available now. We have 113 rooms. We're up and running, and we're very proud to be in the Omaha Old Market area.
Well, we're glad to have you there, and tell us, so I know you have arcade games, it said.
Yeah.
And you're going to have food and drink. What are your hours of operation going to be?
So the Moxie Hub, which is essentially the bar in the front desk area, there's someone sat there 24/7, of course. Alcohol will only be served until 2 a.m., and then, so our breakfast hours are from 6:30 until 9:30. We have dinner from 5 until 2.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion to support this, and again, welcome to the old market. We're glad to have you there, and with all the great things going on down in the old market and in Omaha, this is a great, one of many anchors we're going to be hopefully getting down there. And we give Tim a break, and Christine, you did a great job, Amanda. Thanks for coming down today.
Thank you so much, you guys, for your support. We're very excited to be here.
Thanks for being here today. With that, Mr. President, I'll make a motion to support this today.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Note for the lights, roll call.
Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item nine, to consider Class CK liquor license for Warhorse Casino Omaha located at 6303 Q Street.
Public hearing and vote on number nine is today. Proponents, please. I believe we have Mr. Coffey by Zoom. Okay, try that.
Yeah, hold on one second. So my name is Walter Coffey. I'm vice president of hospitality for Warhorse Gaming. We represent the casino is being developed both in Lincoln and in Omaha. The Warhorse Casino Omaha is located at 6303 Q Street in Horseman's Park location. We're asking for a granting of Class CK liquor license. We originally wanted to wait until the entire casino was up and running. This is for the temporary facility that's up now. The need to do it early is because of the legalization of sports betting, which hopefully we kick off on the 1st of November.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents today on number nine? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mr. Hug.
I can't think of anything I'd rather do than to make a motion to approve this.
There's a motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item 10, to consider Class D liquor license for Casey's 4310 located at 3021 North 204th Street.
Public hearing and vote on number 10 is today. We have the applicant by Zoom as well. Mr. Thompson.
Yes, Joe Thompson, 4822 South 143rd Omaha, here on behalf of Casey's. Answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents in the audience? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Motion and a second, roll call.
Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 11, to consider a liquor license addition application for Fig located at 345 Riverfront Drive to add an outdoor area to their Class C liquor license.
Public hearing and vote on number 11 is today. Proponents, please.
Thank you, Julia Plucker, 2804 South 87th Avenue, here on behalf of the applicant, Fig.
Thank you. Any other proponents today?
Louis Humans, 2709 Dewey Avenue. I participated in the pre-meeting, and you are going to need the waiver for Rule 7. I support the waiver, and not everybody likes the idea of having to waive the rules regarding the distance to a park. But with this concept, I think it is appropriate. So you have Fig is the cafe at the Luminarium. I went over there and I took some pictures, so you have a sense of the space. Currently, Fig can offer alcoholic drinks in the exterior up to this point, which faces east. No alcohol beyond this point. The applicant is asking for this area, which is just around the corner, as a place to serve alcohol or consume alcohol. So, and I took this picture right at the curtain of the building, so it's right there looking northward. And then if you turn around, you can see there's more walking space, landing near the river. This is the bank of the river. And so that's the basic idea that people can drink outside near the river. So approve, I ask that you approve it and that you waive the rule because it's beneficial for the development and for myself, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents on number 11? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve with the waiver.
Motion and a second. Note for the lights, roll call.
Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. I must remove from the consent agenda. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the City Council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the City Council Rules of Order.
The public hearings on Agenda Items 12 through 16 were held on October 17th. I don't see any further lights. Is there a motion? Motion and a second. Roll call.
Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
The public hearings on Agenda Items 17 through 36 are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the Agenda Item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent.
Where that little fellow? You left your pen. Donnie Johnson, the Johnson Question Foundation, North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. By the way, Mr. Fredson, you weren't here last week. I was hoping to talk to you, but I didn't get a chance. Anyway, 25, 26, and number 30. Can you also include a report to Mr. Bagley, District, that the bridge on Dodge Street is also collapsing? And we need to figure out how they're going to fix it in the middle of the winter? Mr. Bigley, I've been studying his bridge there on Dodge, right on 42nd Dodge. It's collapsing.
Any other testifiers on these items today? Seeing none, public hearings are closed. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Oh, thank you. Austin, if you could come up, I just wanted to, I think I asked for some information on Agenda Items 20, 21, 22, 23. All four of these deal with the sidewalk snow removal contracts. And I just wanted to know what the bid was, how much people could expect per square foot if they don't shovel their sidewalk.
Austin, or how's our public works? I went ahead and tabulated the last three years of costs for this contract, this particular contract, and what we put out for publication. You can see the previous years there. Our current rates for this winter are for 0 to 6 inches, $3.45 a linear foot, 1150 for 6 to 12 inches, and 863. If you take an 80-foot lot, what those equate to is for the 1 to 6 inch, that would be $276 for the property. 6 to 12 inches, $920, and greater than 12 inches is $690. You can see these, the rates that we've got this year in comparison with the last three years. The 0 to 6 is about 80% of the average of the three years, same with the greater than 12, with the 6 to 12-inch range being slightly above the previous year's average at 120% of the average for the three years. We do have that currently published. The rates are currently published in the Daily Record. That advertisement began on October 9th and will continue through November 3rd in accordance with the ordinance. And happy to answer any other questions.
No, I appreciate that. And the reason we changed this ordinance a couple of years ago, just to try and allow so that people know how much it costs. And also, this is every year, I like to call everybody's attention to the fact that please get to know your neighbors. If you go into the hospital or you have something happen and there's snow, if you know your neighbor's in the hospital, go shovel their walkway for them. I mean, I really do think no one should have to get, they call it a fine, but it's not a fine. It's what the taxpayers are paying when the city of Omaha has to go out and shovel the walks. Now, these are complaint-based. This, Austin, you don't go drive around and point at houses and then send your people out, right? This is all complaint-based.
Correct.
But when you get a complaint, you're required to go out and provide notice. And I think the most common thing that we hear as the Board of Equalization, when we have to assess the costs of shoveling somebody's driveway or commercial people, by the way, I think one of them was, it was a commercial property, and the sidewalks, they didn't do, and led up to the, it was also where the buses and the handicap walk so that anybody in a wheelchair wasn't going to be able to get to the bus stop. I mean, there are reasons why we kind of have this in place, to allow people to be able to walk where they need to go, even in the winter. But what I hear, what we hear most, I think, over the years is we've had somebody be in the hospital. So she wasn't able to get her sidewalk plowed. I think we've had people who were traveling. There was a storm. They thought somebody else was going to shovel their walkway, and it didn't happen. So I just want everybody to think about this so that you make sure you have kind of a backup. If you're having a problem, I've also seen on Nextdoor post, "I'm in the hospital, could someone shovel my walkway?" I guarantee you'll probably get three to five responses from your neighbors or somebody on the other side of town that's willing to drive over. So I just want to make sure that, you know, what I would like, although we have bids here, and I hope that they, that these companies do well, working for other people, I hope we don't have any this year. That's always my goal, is that everybody gets their sidewalks shoveled themselves, and we don't have to send anyone out and assess people for the cost. Because if it's 6 to 12 inches, and you said 80 feet, that could cost $920 if you've got 80 feet of sidewalk.
Correct.
Even if you only have 40 feet, which isn't that much, that's a smaller frontage of a house. I mean, you're still looking at almost 500 bucks.
Correct.
So hopefully, we'll get this out to everybody. Hopefully, posting it, people will see it. Hopefully, the news will put it out there to let people know so that they're not shocked at the end of the winter when we have to assess somebody for the work. And the other thing is, is the city will go out and also provide notice. But if you're not there, you're out of town, you're in the hospital, you're not necessarily getting it because it's just going on the door. So if we can all watch out for each other and help our neighbors out before maybe we make the complaint, go knock on their door, or maybe get your neighbor's phone number and give them a call to make sure everything's okay, see if there's anything we can do to help, I think that's a much better way of us taking care of sidewalks maybe that need to be shoveled.
I agree.
Thank you very much, Austin.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Austin, what marketing strategy have we as the City of Omaha come up with to educate people in the community regarding these rates?
So we publish the rates. That's required by City Ordinance, that they be published. And again, the publication dates on that were, it's currently published. I just went and looked at it before I came down with the Daily Record. It's October 9th through November 3rd.
So am I to conclude that the only method that we have for a marketing strategy is to post this in the Daily Record?
We have the information on our website. It's available in City Ordinance. It's written in our snow plan. So we have a number of different publications that are out there that are available to people to go out and use those resources.
Okay. And since this is a legal record, can you list to me the number of ways of marketing strategies that the City of Omaha has come up with regarding how the community will be educated regarding these rates?
At least three, but probably more, and I don't know the exact number.
Okay, so we said the Daily Record. What other, this is a part of official record?
It's on the city's website. It's published in the snow plan. Those are the three that I know of for sure.
So we have no other places?
Not that I can think of off my head, off top of my head, but I believe there's social media as well throughout the winter. But those are at least the three that I know of.
So we are not sure that it's posted on?
I know there's at least three. I'm sure of that.
So we're not sure that it's posted?
I'm sure there's at least three.
Okay, so I will assume for the record, we are not posting it on social media. So how do we educate folks in disadvantaged communities that don't have access to the internet, don't have access to the Daily Record? How are we educating those individuals?
We publish the information as we're required to, and additionally, we take steps to post it on the website, get the snow plan out there, make sure those resources are available that people can find and use.
So people in marginalized communities that don't have access to the internet, because we have not been very favorable in these communities as far as making internet service available to these individuals, those individuals, we just don't, we just exclude them. And so if they fall prey on a complaint-driven situation, and they're not aware of this, they just, S.O.L.
The Daily Record's a publication. The city's snow plan is a printed publication. There's certainly access to that in city offices if someone so chooses to kind of look at it.
Okay, so again, I just wanted on the record that the city is not making any provisions for people in underserved communities such as east of 72nd, because they're the ones that may be impacted by this. And I understand that it's being publicized in the Daily Record, which if I'm not, if I'm on a fixed income, I'm not going to have access to the Daily Record. If I'm on a fixed income, I'm not going to have access to the internet. I just wanted to be on the record that even in 2023, as a city of Omaha, and we have a diverse group of people that we serve, that we have not taken into consideration on how we can provide adequate services regarding notification, education to communities east of 72nd.
The city makes considerable effort to make sure that all citizens of Omaha have access to the information.
And so you're saying that the method that you just gave to me that does not take into consideration those that do not have access to the internet, the Daily Record, they just, they just don't get educated. They just by hook or crook, maybe they may know whether or not this increase has taken place.
I don't share that opinion.
I have constituents that do share that feeling. So just throwing that out there. No, nothing will be done about it, but I just want everybody to be informed about how we make decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe.
Mr. President, Austin, can you kind of step through the process? If somebody does file a complaint on a sidewalk that hasn't been cleared, what is the process that you go through?
So we haven't, the first thing we look at is the time. Okay, this is time constrained. So property owners have 24 hours from the end of the city declaring an end of the snow and ice operations on major and secondary roadways. And that's a press release that gets put out that starts at 24 hours. Excuse me, I have that allergy issue with my throat as well. An inspector would go out at the end of that time. So once that time has elapsed, and we have complaints come in, the inspectors go out, they take a look at it, they take photos, they document the situation, and they will post a notice, post a notice to give the property owners 24 hours to clear that sidewalk. Those notices are then followed up on, just to get inventory of who has actually complied after they got noticed and who hasn't. And then at that point in time, then we have the ability to mobilize the contractors that we have under these four items here to come out, clear those sidewalks, and then we can make an assessment at that point.
So is the, is the assessment made at the time you mobilize the contractor or at the time they do the work?
No, the assessment is made at the end of the season, so we have to form a district. So we create, we create a district for an assessment to those properties. They're bundled together. There's a package of those assessments that will go out in each district, and that is given usually at the end of the season. And they have the ability to come through the Board of Equalizations, as you're aware, to protest and appeal.
Okay, that's, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Melton.
I have one ask. On the notice that you put out, could you add the cost? And I mean, you could add the both, all three boxes, you know, if it's 0 to 6, 6 to 12, and over 12. Could you just list the cost per square foot on that notice? Like, it's going to cost depending on how much snow, just so that when they come back to us and people go, "I had no idea how much this was going to cost."
I think we do. I think we do that, but I'll follow up and make sure.
Yeah, we, because it wouldn't be, and you could, that box that, you know, the three columns that you put on there, you could just put those three columns on there, so it goes for no matter what. The people understand how much it's going to cost per foot if the city has to come out. I think that would be a really good thing to have on the notice.
Right. I'll double check that. I think we currently do that.
And then it's, that notice is provided right to the person that's being affected. They don't need internet. They don't need a newspaper because you're putting it right on their front door.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights. Is there a motion on these items?
Second.
Those are, do you want to specify the items?
17 through 36.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to one. Item 37, an ordinance to approve a streetscape maintenance agreement with Mutual of Omaha Insurance Company for the project Beacon Site located at 215 South 15th Street.
Public hearing on number 37 is today. Proponents, please. It's got to be to mutual this, this particular item, right, Donnie?
Excuse me, sir?
It has to be to this particular item, right?
On number 37?
Yes.
Is it permissible to ask a question first? Because you, okay, well, I just wanted to figure out why all these lawyers up there sitting up there, is they to guard you from making a mistake, or that's why you got one, two, three, seven, nine? Anyway, Johnson Question Foundation, North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. We're trying to figure out why there's so many lawyers here watching, keeping an eye on you. In the meantime, this here insurance policy, Saddle Creek and that bridge.
This is not an insurance policy, and this is not Saddle Creek Road.
Street maintenance, oh, sorry.
Any proponents to number 37? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearings closed.
Item 38, an ordinance to approve the NOOK Apartments Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement.
Public hearing on number 38 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Don Seid, Omaha City Planning. I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Council, Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the developer. This was discussed in pretty great detail on October 3rd. So with that, we're here to answer any questions that you might have, but that was the redevelopment plan that was approved for this particular project. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents? Seeing none any opponents.
Oh, my paper. Is this the one about the bridge that's collapsing on Saddle Creek?
Donnie, you're out of order.
Oh, sorry.
Seeing no opponents, public hearings closed. Next item.
One public hearing can be held for Items 39 and 40, ordinances to approve school resource officer agreements for Millard Public Schools and Elkhorn Public Schools for the 2023-2024 school year.
Public hearing on Items 39 and 40 are today. Proponents, please.
Sergeant Eric Pickdell, Omaha Police Department School Resource Program, here for any questions you have.
Thank you, Sergeant. Any other proponents? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearings closed.
Item 41, an ordinance to accept unauthorized disbursement from the fiscal year 2023 Project Safe Neighborhoods Grant Program in the amount of $117,847 to address specific gun crime and gang violence problems.
Public hearing on number 41 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none any opponents. Public hearings closed.
Item 42, an ordinance to accept unauthorized disbursement from the fiscal year 2023 Improving Criminal Justice Responses to Sexual Assault Grant Program in the amount of $575,000 to enhance response to domestic violence.
Public hearing on number 42 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none any opponents. Public hearings closed.
Item 43, an ordinance to accept unauthorized disbursement from the fiscal year 2023 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program in the amount of $454,638 to provide law enforcement programs.
Public hearing on number 43 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none any opponents. Public hearings closed.
Non-action items, Items 44 through 80, do not require public hearing or City Council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion and a second. Roll call.
Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 2:48.
Thank you.